Good evening. Good evening and welcome to the January 10 regular meeting of the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors. Happy New Year. I think I can say that one more time without offending any etiquette people out there. So, 10 days into the New Year. I'd like to thank everybody for coming. As it is customary for us to observe a moment of silence, we ask that you please join the board for a couple of, few seconds of preparation. Thank you. Would you please join the board in a pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Manager, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and there's no special actions? That brings us to our first round of public comment. Please, if you would like to address the board, please come up to the microphone, introduce yourself, where you're from in Newtown or elsewhere, and keep your comments brief as possible.
Good evening. Charles Foyer, Newtown Walk. Good evening, Board and everybody. Happy New Year. I realized in reviewing my comments from the December meeting that I was remiss in not thanking Michael Lewis and the administrative staff of the township for all that they do for us. And I'm here this evening to address the Newtown Yardley-Tara crosswalk traffic improvement. And thank you, Mr. Lewis, for sending me an email today, letting me know that RVE has received comments from PennDOT with regard, excuse me, to the plan. The comments or the questions were not readable, so we don't know what they are. But I understand that RVE is going to respond to PennDOT and we will await the permit. And the timing of this is actually pretty good, believe it or not, because we also wondered about the ARLE grant response. And I respectfully looked at the agenda for this evening and saw that the engineer's report was no reports. So the first question is, what is the ARLE grant response? And the other item that we wanted to bring up collectively, the team, is that recently Newtown Borough approved the traffic light at Lincoln and Washington. They're going to improve it and upgrade it, and they elected to utilize historic decorative fixtures. And what those are, differing from the standard aluminum poles that go up, these are black powder-coated decorative poles and booms that go over the road. They're more historic, decorative, and in light of the fact that we have to respond to PennDOT on the permit, we're requesting that RVE include the specifications for the decorative posts, to utilize those for the crosswalk. And the justification for that is because Newtown Borough is changing to all of these types of decorative posts for the traffic lights, our crosswalk actually represents the east entrance or gateway to Newtown, and it's in a residential area. We have the cemetery on one side and Newtown Walk on the other. It's not a commercial area. And so we're requesting a motion by the board to have RVE include, and what I've done is I filed a right-to-no form with the Borough. And what I'm submitting to RVE and the board are the actual bid responses and the PennDOT approved fixtures for this type of traffic signal intersection, which I believe, with another question to the township engineer, if these fixtures could be used for the posts and boom for the RRFB, for us, at a marginal additional cost. But that's why I ask about the ARLE funding, because we have it through the tax increase, but we have those funds that, and do we know when, well, I guess you'll answer that when you, Mr. Fisher, assigns that, but I saw there was no report. So we're requesting a motion to add this to the PennDOT change of plan so that it won't slow anything down. It's simply asking for approval for fixtures that are already approved for the use by And I've spoken to all the team members in our constituency, and everyone is in favor of that. So I submit these documents as go-by for RVE for something that's already approved by PennDOT. Also, the last item is that I was approached by a Newtown Walk member right after New Year's, and he said to me, what's going on with the crosswalk? I almost got hit there the other day crossing. He wasn't able to be here because he's working tonight. Roland Biron, Newtown Walk. And the one other justification point that I didn't make on the decorative fixtures is that we can all be reminded that this is part of the Newtown Trail. So thanks, I'd love the answers to those questions so we can keep the timeline moving on the new crosswalk improvement. Thanks.
Thank you. While you're going to your seat, I can mention that our township engineer does do a monthly, very long monthly report, and I believe there's a couple of those answers in that report that, when your time comes, you can share those. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Al Default. I also am from Newtown Walk, and I'm also a licensed professional engineer, and I've been following this project from the start. And I compliment RVE and the nice job of getting the right thing put out there from a safety and traffic speed perspective. My only comment tonight really is that I looked at the quote that Charlie got, and it looks like a nominal increase in price just to change the materials on these poles. So it could represent maybe 3%, 4% of the total project cost. So I think if we have the funds, it might be a nice addition to present the gateway to the community. The second thing I wanted to bring up, though, is if you look at the sidewalk, and if we have the funds to do it, if you look at the sidewalk between the cemetery driveway and Elm Street, I think it is, the Borough, you'll see the, up to the Borough line there, there's a concrete walk or a paved walk with a curb. And I think from an engineer's perspective here for a safety issue, if we have some money, we could probably extend that curb line along that sidewalk and provide a little bit more pedestrian protection on that curve as you come across into Newtown Walk. So I'd ask you, your engineer, to consider that, maybe take a look at it, and if we can get it on the drawings, that would be a nice improvement in that area, and also enhance the trail and its safety. Any questions? If not, I'm all done.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mark Bjorkman. I'm also from Newtown Walk, here to talk about the crosswalk. On Monday, those of us that live there noticed that there was an apparent accident at the crosswalk that was serious enough that left a piece of bumper and a whole bunch of pieces. They were laying right in front of the crosswalk, so it was never reported to the police, so we don't really know exactly what happened, but it does sort of give a little indication that this is not a good spot. If I had to guess, I would guess that somebody probably did stop for somebody in the crosswalk, and because the people behind them can't see the crosswalk because there's no RRFB or anything above it, somebody probably back-ended the person who was stopped at the crosswalk, which would be very typical. So I'm going to submit this, it can be part of the record. I have some photos, if anybody wants some colored photos, I have them. Thank you.
Good evening. Valerie Mahalik, also from the Newtown Walk community. Happy New Year to all of you, and I hope everyone survived last night's storm. And thank you to the Police Department Chief Hearn for all your department did for the area as well last night. I just wanted to, as we start the New Year, as you know, we've been working on this for two years, we do appreciate all of your help, particularly Supervisor Mack. You know, you're reaching out and, you know, continuing to work with us the way that you have been. Can we get a timeline either from Mr. Lewis or from the engineer as to what we're looking at now that it's January of 2024?
I'm sure we can get some email, some answers via email.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I'm sure we could get some answers via email, as we have been doing.
Yeah, that would be great, only because, you know, over the holidays, we saw a lot of our neighbors, and they were asking, you know, what's the status? And we just would like to have something that specifies as we start the year what it is that we're looking at. Thank you.
I had some of the same questions, so it is a new year. Any other, any other comments? Going once, going twice? Okay, thank you. Moving on. We have reports of committees, oh, we don't have any minor approvals, right, Mr. Manager? Okay, so we're going to reports of committees, boards, and commissions. There's no committee reports this evening, so we'll go right into board members, and mine as chair have three items. On December 18, I attended the NFA dinner. It was actually their meeting, but they started with the captain's dinner, so that was well-attended. And having, that being the first NFA meeting after our budget was passed, they expressed their appreciation for the township recognizing the value of fire services and including that in our budget for the coming year. So that was the NFA. Last Thursday evening, Ms. Snyder and I attended the jointure meeting. That's the meeting that takes place with Upper Makefield and Wrightstown in Newtown, Newtown Township. And it was their reorganization meeting, and just one or two highlights from that are our very own vice chair, Alan Snyder, was elected as vice chair of the jointure. Trying to see what else we, the Bucks County Planning Commission gave a high-level overview of changes to the comprehensive, the comprehensive plan. And that's a document that's usually done every 10 years, and we're close to finalizing it. We're slated for our February meeting to try to have it prepared to send back to the townships, to advertise, to have public comment on it. And so we're probably like three or four months away from having a comprehensive plan We also looked at a couple of other pending ordinances, and the one that we'll probably work on next is the telecommunications ordinance. That's how to incorporate 5G wireless into our ordinances. So we've gotten a report from our consultant, and probably that'll be the next thing, as I say, the next thing that comes back to the township to review. And that is about it for the jointure meeting. One last meeting we attended, Mr. Mack and I attended a meeting at the Villas this afternoon to talk about stormwater management. To hear what they were saying about stormwater management. We listened. Okay, that comes to the vice chair, Ms. Snyder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the chair said, we attended the jointure meeting last week. Last night was, I'm sorry, Monday night was the last EAC meeting we had, our environmental group, where we are actively working on solutions for businesses if they have problems with the new plastics ordinance. And yesterday, I attended a sewer authority meeting, and that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Mack?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On, let's see, I attended the zoning hearing board meeting on January 4. It was a very interesting, three-hour-long meeting, and the main thing I wanted to mention was the Bosch Belt Deli signage appeal. As you may know, they have a neon sign in their door window, or one of their windows, and according to our signage ordinance, those signs are prohibited in Newtown. Any sign that's illuminated by the use of an inner grass or any form of exposed tubes is not permitted in Newtown. The board had our center, Mr. Sander, to represent us, and I think he did re-oppose this appeal, and I think Mr. Sander did a very good job. And I think what's next is they held off the decision until February 1. And so we'll have to see how that goes, and meanwhile, I'll be able to say more about that at my next Meet Mack Monday meeting on January 22. So keep an eye out for that. I also want to mention again, I'm going to embarrass Ms. Snyder again, because I nominated Ms. Snyder for a prestigious award from the publication called, what's it called, the CSPA?
City and State.
City and State for Pennsylvania. It's an Above and Beyond Award for Women nominations, and I mentioned Ms. Snyder's leading role in the passage of a woman's reproductive rights resolution passed by the township. And I also mentioned her role in getting the single-use plastics ban enacted. The nomination is, the deadline is January 12. I guess that's Friday. So I urge everybody who would like to nominate Ms. Snyder to go to the site, and you can read all about that on my article on June 3 that I published in the Newtown Patch. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Mr. Clabro? Thank you. Mr. Lewis? I mean, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Davis?
I have nothing to report either.
Okay. All right, that brings us to public hearings, and I'm going to throw it to Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the board's last meeting, the board tabled the PRD variance hearing for 10 Bedford Lane, Mr. and Mrs. Schmitz. So it would be appropriate, if the board wishes to continue to consider that matter, that a motion be made and seconded to remove the Schmitz PRD variance hearing from the table.
Do we have such a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none. We're just voting on removing it from the table so we can talk about it. So all those in favor of taking it off the table, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries five zero.
Okay, so the matter is now back before the board. This is the continuation of a public hearing that was opened at the board's last meeting. There was an issue concerning comments by a neighbor concerning stormwater management. The neighbor couldn't be at the last meeting. The neighbor has advised the board that she is unable to attend this meeting as well. There were comments submitted that the board has regarding stormwater management, and it's now in the hands of the board as to whether it wishes to take action on this matter. If the board wishes to take action, it would be a motion to approve the PRD variance application of Ian and Courtney Schmitz for 10 Bedford Lane, conditioned on compliance with the township engineer's December 21, 2023 letter.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board?
Can't somebody just give me a little review of this? I mean, I didn't have time to really look at all the details.
Yeah, this is an application seeking an impervious surface ratio increase of 3.38% for the installation of an in-ground swimming pool in Durham Lee. Durham Lee is a PRD, therefore this is an amendment to the Durham Lee's final plan.
Is this where a resident came in and complained that this would, there's water coming off of their property already and so on?
There was, and that's why the board tabled it at the last meeting. That resident has submitted emails to the board stating her position with regard to that, and the board has seen those, and...
Her position is opposed to this?
Well, her position is that the township, through its engineer, be very careful with the stormwater management issues, because there are already stormwater management issues affecting those properties. So the township engineer's letter, and she can certainly chime in here, reviews fully the stormwater management issues that were raised by this application. Leanna, do you want to chime in?
If that's correct, we reviewed the plans, and they're proposing, you know, an underground infiltration trench to mitigate the proposed pool. We reviewed the plans, issued comments, the applicant and their engineers addressed all of our comments, and, you know, how we look at it as if they're complying with the township ordinance, and they are.
So that would mitigate the increase in impervious surface, is what you're saying?
It would, yes.
When you mentioned 3.8% increase, does that mean, can you give me the real number?
Sure. The maximum allowable impervious surface is 25%. They are proposing 28.38%, and those are the real numbers.
You know, I'm hardly, I don't like to penalize somebody for 3.8%, but every, we're getting many, many of these things where the impervious surface is being increased a little bit here, a little bit there. Pretty soon, it's going to be, you know, something significant overall, but as long as there's this mitigation that our engineer has approved and they agree to that, then I'm fine with it. Thank you.
Any other board comments, questions? I had two, two questions. One was, I think the last version I looked at still had underlined about providing a Bucks County Conservation District letter. Has that been submitted?
They have since received that.
Okay. And the other one is, there's an area of fencing that needs to be repaired or replaced?
They've also shown that the fence will be installed for the new pool.
Yep. Other than that, I've noted that it's been reviewed by an architect, it's been reviewed by a stormwater specialist, it's been reviewed by our township engineers, and it seems like there's enough justification there that, you know, you're complying with everything. Ms. Snyder?
I just want to say I've seen this come up before the planning commission and before us twice. There's nobody here that is the neighbor that has the complaint, so I think enough time has passed that I'm comfortable with this.
Any other comments from the board, questions, comments, concerns? How about the public? I know there's one there. So could you please come up to the microphone if you want to make a comment? And for the record, please state your name and...
Joseph Madden, 447 Parkview Way. I'm in the...
Tyler Walk?
No, the Heights of Newtown. Tyler Walk, yeah, Tyler Walk, developed. And last month, I showed you a picture of a pipe that the next-door neighbor was using to relieve a water problem at her house, and I have a similar problem at my house. And someone, I think the president asked me last week, what did I estimate the distance being from my house? And I said 300 yards. I was talking to Ms. Ginberg today, the zoning officer, and she said, well, the, you know, the notice said anybody within 550 feet. And I had begun to suspect that my estimate of 300 yards was excessive. So it could be 100 yards, 200 yards, it could be 500 feet, whatever. But there is, you know, my property is situated in a position where all of Durham Lee that I could ever see, it was a very extensive area, was all regraded down to a small, let's say, it was a pipe or something, just in back of my property. And I can't see the area very well today, but I did go up and take a look, and it looks like a rather, like a rather large foxhole now, an inverted, like a halfball, you know, set into the ground. I don't know what happened to some of the other parts of the remediation, but I would like the engineer to come out and at least look at it and talk to me about it, because I do have excessive water, based on my position in the, in my development. You know, I may be the only development, only person in the development that got it, I just don't know, but I mean, I'm really concerned about it, because, you know, somebody else asked about seepage or something, or, you know, the nature of the problem, and, you know, the water seeps out into the common walkway, and I believe that will increase with, you know, with this variance going through. And I don't know that I'm, I think some of it may be modified now by the fact that the pipe that I have feeding into the common area and outward from there, I couldn't find it when I looked for it, so, but there is water seeping, and then it ices over. So I just think that this warrants a look, you know, by the township engineer, and Ms. Ginberg suggested that too, that, you know, he at least come around and maybe look at the sites with me and, you know, give it some... give it some thought.
Has the Township engineer been out there? How do you know that this mitigation is going to work without examining what's going on?
I do not believe this property is directly adjacent to the pool that's being proposed. Obviously, we have not... The pool or the infiltration bed has not been constructed yet, so, you know, we're looking at it from design practices and, you know, how it will be constructed. And then, obviously, the homeowner is going to be required to enter into an operation and maintenance agreement to ensure that it functions properly.
What is that agreement? Can you explain what that is?
Yeah, so every property owner that has a stormwater BMP, whether it's an infiltration bed or a rain garden, is required to enter into an operations and maintenance agreement with the township that requires them to perform maintenance on the system to ensure that it's, you know, working properly. That also gives the township enforcement ability, let's say, if someone's not maintaining their system, that, you know, it could be rectified, you know, through the township.
And who goes out there to determine whether the maintenance is being done?
The township does that, staff, and we also do that as part of the MS4 program. We perform, you know, inspections as part of that for the township.
Are there several... Are there many of these agreements that are current?
Yes.
Already?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Lewis, is this generally something that our codes officer or, you know, one of our engineers?
It would be Remington Vernix.
Okay. If Mr. Maddox gave you a call and asked for that, would that be a possibility?
I suppose so.
To have someone come out and look at his property?
Yeah.
Okay. So give the Township a call.
Okay, now, this is Mr. Lewis, Township engineer?
Yes. Or are they... He's the Township manager.
Township, okay.
And he'll probably have someone give you a call.
Oh, you're going to call me, or should I call?
You call him.
Okay. Can I have your number? Why would you? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the PRD variance hearing for 10 Bedford Lane, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. You're welcome. You've got a pool. I say you've got a swimming pool.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The next public hearing is also a PRD variance hearing. This is the application of Bharat and Varsha Shah for 34 Alyssa Drive. This is for a sunroom addition. It also exceeds the allowable impervious surface for the final plan of overlook, which is a PRD in the township. I don't know if the Shahs are here. They are? Okay, why don't we come forward? Mrs. Shah, this property has been posted with notice of this evening's hearing. It's also been advertised for a public hearing this evening. And Ms. Shah, if you want to step up to the podium and just tell the board what you want to do here, please? You can certainly remove your mask because they're not going to be able to hear you.
Okay.
There you go.
Hi, I'm Varsha Shah. Happy New Year. My adult daughter has moved back in with us, and while the house is big enough to adjust to this new change, the kitchen has become very small. So we are hoping to get that sunroom to extend the kitchen. So it will... Part of our deck is what we are hoping to cover with your approval.
Yeah, for the board's information and to respond to a question that Mr. Mack may ask me, this is a difference of 160 square feet of impervious coverage for this proposed sunroom addition. 3162 exists, and 3322 are proposed. Difference of 160 square feet. It'd be appropriate for... Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Shah.
I just wanted to add that we did check in terms of what are the steps to follow in order to try to get the approval. And so we did tell the neighbors about it, and the neighbors wrote us a letter saying that they are okay with it. So that was the first step, and then we went through all the steps that, as the township has recommended in terms of getting the surveys and getting the whatever paperwork in place. Hopefully, all of that was well-followed, and you had it all.
Yes, it did seem like the packet was complete from my point of view.
All right, thank you.
The... I think there were three letters from your neighbors.
Yes.
And I'm also looking at the Township Engineers' review, and there's nothing... Usually, there's things to be addressed that are underlined, and there's nothing underlined, so...
Yeah, that's correct. They've addressed everything to this point.
So...
Well, if the boards have a mind, it would be a motion to approve the PRD variance application for Bharat and Varsha Shah for 34 Alyssa Drive in the overlook development, conditioned on compliance with the Remington Vernix letter dated December 12, 2023.
I'll make the motion.
Motion, do we have a second? Motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of approving the PRD variance for 34 Alyssa Drive, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for making it like an easy process. Everything was very clearly explained to us, and we were able to follow all the steps. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. We try.
At the risk of being repetitive, we have yet another PRD variance hearing. This is the last one of the evening, Mr. Chairman. This is the application of Beverly George Jordan, owner applicant of 3 Warwick Court, again for a PRD variance from the maximum allowable impervious surface on her lot located in Wilshire Walk Development. On this one, it looks like Ms. George Jordan is here for us. The numbers on this, it is a difference of 584.5 square feet between the proposed in-ground swimming pool and what is already existing on the property. Ms. George Jordan, you can address the board, please.
Good evening, members, board members. Thank you for having me. So my family, we're just trying to put the pool in. And we had our first one, baby, and we wanted to be able to put this pool in so we could get that extra comfort. And the impervious is, I think, 8%. 41 now, we'll go to about 49%. I think we submitted a lot of what we're supposed to submit, but we had a little situation with our engineer where his license had some issues. But he is working on getting everything resolved to get the rights significantly severe. So if you could approve it subject to, you know, him providing everything to Ms. Leanna, we would appreciate that very much.
All right. I did notice there was an expired certification that you're working on.
Yes, he's working on it. He's also working with Severe, so if his one doesn't get rectified immediately, the Severe is working on it as I speak to make sure that Ms. Leanna gets what she has on the outstanding items.
Would it be...
Yeah, I mean, if, again, board questions, obviously appropriate, public comment appropriate. But if the boards have a mind, it would be a motion to approve the PRD variance application of Beverly George Jordan for 3 Warwick Court, subject to compliance with the Township Engineers' letter dated December 21, 2023, subject to compliance with the 3 Wilshire Walk Homeowners Association letters, the first dated December 7, 2022, and two separate letters dated June 22, 2023. And finally, it would be subject to the applicant's engineer working out his certification issues and submitting all documents and plans to the Township engineer as required.
Can I ask a question? Let's get it on the table first. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now we're going to questions. Just to go back to the other pool situation, is this a similar situation with mitigating factors here and needing to register with the township and so on?
So this project is proposing less than 1,000 square feet of new impervious, which is the threshold for, you know, installing stormwater management features.
Ah, I didn't know that.
Yep, so this one isn't required to install that due to the size of the pool. The other pool is much larger.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, then, I'll call the question. Those in favor of approving this PRD variance for 3 Warwick Court, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
And that concludes the public hearings. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Enjoy your poll.
Thank you so very much, and thank you, Ms. Leanna, for your patience. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you. You're welcome. All right, no land development, reports of officials.
I'm back on, Mr. Chairman. There are no engineering reports.
There's no engineering report, but I did want to...
Okay, I will hold my tongue.
Had a... Anyone from the board had a question based on Leanna's... Leanna, I hope you enjoyed your vacation.
Oh, thanks. What do you got for me?
The DVRPC Regional Streetlight Procurement Program. There's a couple of confusing things on here. You said Michael Fuller, who was here once quite a while ago, you said he might be back in October. I don't think he was. You mentioned you had a staff meeting with him in November, and the resolution to move construction phases tentatively scheduled for December 2023. That obviously didn't happen, right? So can you give us an update on this project? This has to do with the changing the streetlights to LED. And I'll notice in my reports on the bills list, we're spending quite a lot of money on repairs to streetlights and Pico to light them up. So this is a very important project, I think. I'd like to know more. How's it going?
Yep, so we, and along with staff, met with Mike Fuller. He provided us with some of the preliminary design specifications that they had prepared as, you know, part of the audit that they completed. There were a few tweaks that we were looking at in terms of location and adding some additional neighborhood streets that maybe weren't included in that audit. So originally, there was discussion of him coming in December to present that information, but he's working on making those modifications based on the staff information. And then hopefully, in the next month, I'm looking at Catherine, hopefully in the next month, there'll be, you know, some more information provided to the board with those final specifications.
So I don't know what an audit actually is, but is that something we would take a look at? Or is that something he presents? He would come in, or...
He would likely present like a summary on the information, and then that would, you know, be able to, if the board would approve that, move into the construction phase. So it's the package of, you know, the actual specifications on how the lights are getting replaced and the analysis based on the lights that they looked at, you know, the energy reports that they reviewed and things like that. So that would be in that report that they would present to the township.
Okay, great. The other... One other item I had was Richborough Road and West Hanover Street entrance to Tyler Park. I know a resident had come here and was concerned about the safety of that intersection. And in your report, it says you have contacted PennDOT about performing a safety study at this intersection. Is there any update on that?
No, we contacted them last month. We gave them some, you know, information that we had regarding the situation out there, requested that the study occur. We have not heard a response yet, so we're due for a follow-up on that. So we'll follow up with PennDOT and provide the board with an update.
When you make a request from PennDOT, do they have a specific time limit they have to get back to you with, or does this not apply?
Not for this, so we can certainly follow up with them.
All right. Any number that I can call and give them my opinion?
I can give you the contact information, who we reached out to, if you'd like.
All right. The last one is the Tower Crosswalk, and I think you have mentioned that you received from PennDOT the... Some things that you have to change. Can you summarize a little bit about what the PennDOT is asking for?
Sure. There's a lot of comments that they had regarding the plan presentation, you know, how the symbols look on the plan and things like that, just to match the PennDOT standards. So those are... We've started addressing most of those, so those are addressed. They did have a few comments on just slight layout tweaks of where the poles would be located. So we're hoping to schedule a call with them as soon as possible just to clarify those items to be ready for resubmission. So it's nothing significant, but it's just that standard process of, you know, some administrative things as well as some, you know, minor modifications to the poles.
So this is just some kind of tweaky thing?
Exactly, yep.
And what Mr. Fura... Did I pronounce your name correctly? I was asking about the, can you incorporate any of that in the update, or...
We can look at the historic option. I believe that the poles that we were proposing are powder-coated black, so I can, you know, check with our design team on that and see if we can incorporate, you know, some historic fixtures. We can also, you know, present some cost to the township to see if it would make sense.
Okay, thanks very much.
There was also a question that I can just comment on, on the Arlie funding. The grant agency had originally referenced a December 2023 announcement. We're obviously past that. We haven't heard anything. So a lot of times, we see with these grant deadlines that they do slide in terms of them announcing the funding. So hopefully, soon, you know, we'll hear from them, and we'll reach out to PennDOT too, just on their general timeline for announcements on that.
Do they make those announcements online or anything like...
They do a press release, is usually how they'll do it, and then they'll also more than likely reach out to Mr. Lewis.
Great. And then hopefully, we answer questions at least in part, and we can do some more back and forth with email to get answers. So Mr. Lewis has been great about doing that lately, so wonderful. Any other questions for our engineer? Very good. Thank you so much. Mr. Sandy, you're back on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before the board this evening, first and only item on our report is the LIOLI zoning amendment ordinance. This is an ordinance that has been in construction for a long time now. It has been reviewed by the Planning Commission and recommended to the Board of Supervisors. The board would be considering tonight sending this ordinance to the Joint Church, the Joint Zoning Council, of course, Newtown, Wrightstown, and Upper Makefield Townships, for review. So this is not approving it. This is not holding a public hearing. This is just sending the ordinance on as the next step in the process toward enactment. So if the boards have a mind, it would be a motion to send the LIOLI draft ordinance to the Joint Church for review.
Someone like to make that motion?
I will make that motion.
I will second it. Any questions from the board? I know I have a couple, so... Well, you want to go first?
I'll go first. Just to reiterate, this is not passing or approving this ordinance. It's sending it to the... We're resolving to send it to the Joint Church for comment.
Correct.
And our Joint Church partners will be able to make comments and...
Yeah, this will be put on a Joint Zoning Council meeting agenda for discussion and comment. comment.
Probably a couple agendas, I would think. So we could, at that meeting, we could tell them why we want it, number one, but also get some advice, ask for their ideas on improving it.
Certainly.
We can attend, and also, this was written by the Bucks County Planning Commission, so they attend the Jointure meetings, and we can get some direct back and forth with them as well.
Certainly.
At the Jointure. Let me just make sure that I got all my questions, comments. I think that's it for now, I think there's probably another few comments to make. Mr. -- Ms. Mack?
Yeah, I mean, if we approve this, obviously Wrightstown and Upper Makefield are Jointure partners, do not have an OLILI, is that correct?
I believe that is correct. I believe this only applies to Newtown.
They don't give a darn about this, and whatever we want, they will rubber stamp it. And basically, I'm opposed to this because it has two uses by, use by right. Can you tell us, these are like mixed-use development and apartment buildings? And I would just remind the board that on, according to the Planning Commission, I mean Peggy Driscoll came here on October 25th and gave her synopsis, and the new draft, she says, lists the two proposed residential uses, mixed-use development and town center apartments, as by right uses. The commission feels that as this is a completely new use, we would like the township to have the extra layer of control that conditional use would add. Can you explain the difference between use by right and conditional use?
Sure. A use by right is a use that is permitted on the property pursuant to zoning. That doesn't mean they can go out and build whatever it is they want to build, they still have to file land development plans. But as far as zoning goes, that use doesn't need any other permission. A conditional use is something that the board hears often, especially for the uses in the village at Newtown, and that is a use that is permitted, permitted, but subject to review and comment by the board, and if the board wishes, the attaching of conditions to the approval of that use. So it's a layer of oversight that the board has in conditional use that it doesn't have in a use by right.
So if we have this use by right, the board has no ability to make any changes or requirements or have oversight, basically?
Well, just of the use itself, they would certainly have oversight, comment, and control over land development plans that would be filed.
What does that mean? What's the difference? Mr. Sullister, a use by right doesn't, isn't a rubber stamp?
No.
For that developer to go in and just do what they want?
Of course not.
Even though they are applying for that particular use.
Correct. They don't have to get zoning approval, they still have to get land development approval from this board.
So they still have to come before the Board of Supervisors and fulfill the requirements that we want them to fulfill?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And if there were dimensional variances, they'd still need to get those?
Absolutely.
This is a use, we're talking about a use variance that they wouldn't have to get?
Correct.
Well, I just would like to go by the recommendation of the Planning Commission, and that's why I would not vote to send this on to the Jointure at this point.
Any other comments from the board on this? How about from the public? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of sending the LIOLI draft ordinance to the Jointure, say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries three two. Doesn't mean it still can't be changed.
And that concludes our report, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Let me get back to my agenda. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balance this evening is $4,910,195. Plan expiration before the board with no action required. We have Chief Hearn tonight to give us his monthly chief's report. Evening, Chief.
Evening, sir, and evening, board members.
Evening.
December 2023 police report for the month of December, and these year-end totals. Documented 1,915 calls for service in the month of December was a 13% increase from the prior year. We logged 22,000 patrol miles on our fleet, we had 20 arrests, five were for assault, three of which were domestic, five for retail theft, three narcotics violations, and seven DUIs. There were 14 cases referred to Detective Divisions for Investigation, including six crime scenes processed, some of which included a bomb scare at a commercial establishment, terroristic threats, simple assault, five death investigations, frauds, child line complaints, and two terroristic threats, one involving a firearm. There were 58 traffic crashes, 12 reportable, 24 non-reportable, 15 deer collisions. 95 traffic citations were issued, and 270 warnings were issued. Selective enforcement, our truck enforcement worked at bypass in Lindenhurst in Newtown, inspected 15 trucks, issued three citations, 11 warnings, and one vehicle was placed out of service. Notable jobs on December 10th, 2023, patrol units apprehended what we believe to be an organized theft ring at a local commercial establishment, and arrested four individuals from Philadelphia. On 12/15, we had a bus operator from the Council Rock School District arrested for DUI while operating a school bus. And like I said, at the end of year reports, we actually had a 13% increase in assignments in the year 2023 for reported incidents. That's up 2,630 assignments. Our total traffic crashes remained the same across the board, however, our reportable crashes were much higher. We increased citations and warnings on both aspects throughout the year, but our reportable crashes, which includes towing and injuries, were significantly higher. So we are trying to direct patrol aspects to reduce that number so we prevent injuries in towing. Public service announcements, seasonal part-time employment opportunity for a school crossing guard is still open. A lot of changes in 2023 with promotions. We instituted a new records management software system, we increased our training hours, and we implemented our body worn camera program. I appreciated all the officers' efforts and work trying to change up on our different programs, and it's going successful so far. Domestic assaults, I mentioned we had three arrests this month for domestic assault. For those of you who have significant others, if you're in a dispute, which we all have from time to time, it's better to take a walk than get involved in a physical altercation. I'd be happy to answer any question you may have.
Any questions for the chief?
I don't have any questions, chief. I would just like to say thank you, as usual, for the high standards that our police department, who serves Wrightstown and Newtown Township constantly lives up to. Appreciate that, and Happy New Year to everybody.
Thank you, Happy New Year.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. It's all I have under my report, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lewis, I didn't?
Mr. Chair, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I wanted to give you just a second, I know you can do this, I'm not putting you on the spot, and thank folks for, thank the staff for coping with the new software, and tell us how it's going.
It's ongoing, but yes, we've recently switched to the new software. You see the 110 bills list looks a little different, and it has been a challenge, and we are, what, seven days in now?
Pretty good.
And we're doing pretty good with it, so it's a big overhaul from what we came from, but I think in the long term, it's going to work out for the betterment of everybody, and I do, I want to thank the staff for tolerating us, and especially thank Amanda Gattuso and Catherine McGovern for getting this program off the ground, because without those two, this wouldn't have happened, so I appreciate it.
Great. It's a quantum leap for our computer capabilities. All right, I bring this to?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, please, thank you.
One of my favorite reports is the plan expiration dates report. I know everybody gets excited about this one, but there's been a project on our dockets here for a long time, and I'm just curious, as the KRE, Upper McConge Associates LP, if we have any kind of set date for when they would like to come, and if there is a reason why it's still being prolonged?
So the only answer I can provide to that is that it's been continued by the applicant indefinitely, and if they were to hold another hearing, they would need to publicly advertise it, and we would notify the public of when that date would be.
Great, I copied mine out this time, so I think about you, Mr. Calabro, when I check it out every two weeks.
Maybe not someone else is looking at it.
Yeah. Minutes, bills list, and reports, Mr. Mack. This used to be your report.
Yeah, let me see if I remember how to do this. I'd like to make a motion to approve the December 6, 2023 minutes.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of accepting the minutes of?
December 6?
December 6th. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing.
Next is a motion to approve the January 2nd, 2024 reorganization meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of accepting the minutes of January 2nd, 2024 reorganization meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero.
Okay, moving on to the December 22nd, 2023 bills list, which I think looks like it's in a new format, I'm not sure. No?
That one is the old one.
Okay. I want to make a motion to approve the payment of the bills totaling $324,607.4.
Motion and a second? Mr. Mack's presentation would be the motion, you'd be the second.
Oh, yes, thank you.
That's good, yes. So any further discussion from the board?
I just want to make a comment that, as I mentioned before about the streetlights, we pay money to Armor and Sons Electric, and from my calculation, the totals that we pay for them in terms of fixing repairs to the streetlights in 2023 was $71,534.90. The budget was, I think, $60,000 for that. And the PICO Energy, the total was $120,362 in some sense. So totally, in 2023, we are spending $191,906 to repair and illuminate those street, those old, old-timey streetlights, so I think we desperately need those LED lights. The other thing I want to mention is Barry Islett and Associates. There was, payments in 2023 look like to me $303,000 over budget. You know, I know that I received from Mr. Lewis some invoices, and at some point, as I promised, I would like to get back to you and look over some of those things to see how we get so much over budget there, but anyway, that's my comments.
I think we had a little bit of questioning about that last meeting, and I remember some of it was passed through, but yeah, get together on that.
Well, it spent $515,000 last year for professional services related to code enforcement and zoning, which I assume goes to this Barry Islett guy, Isit guy, or whoever. That's a lot of money, you know?
Yep.
Anyway, there's a motion and?
There is a motion. Any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of paying our bills as listed on the bills list for December 22nd, 2023, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero.
Regarding that bills list, I moved that we approve fund transfers of $285,000.
I'll be a second. So we have a motion and a second, do we have a, any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of paying our bills as listed on the inter-fund transfers for December 22nd, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero.
Finally, regarding the January 10, 2024 bills list, I move that we pay our bills in, according to that list, of a total of $249,591.87.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, thank you. Any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of paying our bills as listed on the January 10th, 2024 bills list, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four, one.
Okay. Finally, I move we approve fund transfers totals of $736,120.6.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board?
Yeah, I have a quick question, just as a refresher. We go through these inter-fund transfers every meeting, and it's almost like a repetitive thing. I was just wondering if the manager could just explain, for the public's purpose, and maybe for any officers that need a refresher, what are inter-fund transfers?
Mr. Calabro, thank you. The inter-fund transfers basically are transfers from the different funds, whether it's a fire protection fund, whether it's the American Rescue Fund, general fund to the other funds, it's just an authorization to transfer the money to different funds that are outlined
Any other refreshers needed? Do we have a motion and a second on this, and we're calling the question for inter-fund transfers for January 10th, 2024? All those in favor of paying the bills, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. All right. That brings us to our second round of public comment. Anyone having comments for the board? Please come to the podium, state your name and your community and?
John DiApril, Newtown Grant, biggest and the best. I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year, including the board. New year, let's not have, let's have good decisions this year, not like some of the dumb ones you made last year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiApril. Any others? All right, moving on to old business. Anyone have any old business? Anyone have any new business?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to talk about something that I encountered this morning. I live near the Newtown Cemetery. And while walking my dog, I saw that a good portion of the Newtown Cemetery was covered in water. The caretakers were there, and I asked them, has this, does this happen often? And they said, no, it's never happened before. They said, because of building surrounding them, of course, the water runoff is affecting the grave sites. What I'm getting to is that we are lenient sometimes in our stormwater management and our impervious surface allowances. I don't think that should happen so much anymore. I think we have to tighten up on that a lot. Change is coming. It's not only Upper Makefield and Wrightstown with flooding. It's also affecting us here. So I will be paying extra attention to things like that in the future. That's all I have.
I know driving around today, I saw a lot of retention, detention basins that were pretty full, so. But we just keep getting these big storms. But thank you for bringing that up. Any other new business? All right. Any need for an executive session?
No, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Without objection, then, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for coming.